We are now on Bill 30, Mental Health Services Protection Act. Are there any questions, comments, or amendments with respect to this bill? Honorable Minister of Health?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to bring forward the next important step in ensuring that Bill 30, Mental Health Services Protection Act, moves forward to indeed protect the mental health services that so many Alberta families are counting on these days. And I am incredibly proud, as has been mentioned, there are two main sections to this legislation, one that regulates health professionals that are billing themselves as counsellors or therapists, and the other that regulates residential treatment facilities. Both are incredibly important in making sure that we address the mental health crisis and substance use challenges that we are facing in our province. I've had the honour of discussing this bill with many of my colleagues, both in this House, in the hallway, and in my office. And it's incredibly important legislation. I heard a desire to ensure that this doesn't impact peer support programs, including 12-step programs. And I want to assure all honourable members that I completely agree, those are important, valuable programs, and it's important for peer mentors to have an opportunity to continue to support each other without fear that college could negatively impact that. It's my understanding that it wouldn't, but to ensure certainty, I have the following amendment and the requisite number of copies to provide that absolute clarity to all honourable members and Albertans. Thank you. Well, I should keep one copy, I think, to read. Thank you. So what I'm proposing is that we amend the bill as follows. In section 29, sub 3, that it be amended by adding the following after 3, sub 3 of this proposed Schedule 3.1. So 3.1, sub 4 would read, "For greater clarity in this section, 'counselling relationship' does not include providing emotional, social, practical support between individuals who share a common lived experience." And I think this is fundamental to what my colleagues have been saying. I don't believe that the legislation would have negatively impacted that, as the college will be defining the role of therapist and counselling therapist. But I appreciate the concern that they had in wanting to ensure and enshrine that that would not be the case, Madam Speaker. So that's why we've proposed this amendment as it is. Some might say that we should remove addiction counselling from this bill entirely. I don't believe that that's the solution. In fact, this morning, I was reading, and I'll be happy to table this piece later during tablings later in the day, but in the Vancouver Sun piece, "Missing Harm Reduction Measure, Regulating Mental Health Professionals." And I'll just read a few sections. This is, "For more than 20 years, the mental health professionals have warned that qualified or bad practitioners are killing British Colombians. Finally, the overdose crisis may have pushed their concerns to the public agenda." The journalist goes on to say, "Anyone in British Columbia can build a website and sell their services as an interventionist, promising to rescue people from the throes of addiction and get them into their care. In fact, without government regulation, anyone can claim to be a mental health professional using the name councillor or therapist, set up a private practice and charge them whatever they want. The problem has festered in the last two decades, but now it has taken on more urgency as the province, British Columbia, this being, enters the third year of a public health emergency due to illicit drug overdose crisis and increasing number of grifters that are taking financial advantage of desperate families willing to pay anything to help their loved ones." And, Madam Speaker, it is with that same thrust, and this is very timely, just this morning in British Columbia, that this piece came out calling on the federal government to indeed regulate addictions therapists and folks working in that space. That is why I think it's really important that we do regulate it through our bill, which is the case in the bill as proposed, but that we do provide that certainty to folks working on a 12-step program and a peer-to-peer program. So that's why my amendment didn't go further. That's why my amendment specifically outlined that the counselling relationship doesn't apply to peer support or people with lived experience working in a mentor-type way. I believe Albertans seeking relief from substance use have a right to know that the people supporting them are held to a high standard and that they are regulated health professionals. People who are counsellors or counselling therapists have called on governments to do this for a number of years, and I'm proud to be acting on that. But so have the family members, as we mentioned when we introduced this bill, called on that greater oversight. So with this amendment, I believe that we will ensure both. Peer support, like 12-step programs, are supported, but that counselling therapists are regulated, including addiction therapists, which I believe has the ability to save lives, Madam Speaker, and help Alberta families. And what's more important than that, I don't think much. It's hard to think of anything more important than saving lives and helping families. So that's why I'm proposing this amendment, to give that clarity to all Albertans and my honourable colleagues, and to make sure that we do move forward with that as our utmost focus. So with that, I'd be happy to address questions or concerns regarding the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. Are there any other members wishing to speak to the amendment? The Honourable Member for Vermillion Lloydminster.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank the Health Minister for this amendment. I do think it improves the bill and provides for that. I guess I just do have one question, though, and it's a clarification. The last few words of the amendment include the words, "Who share a common lived experience?" And certainly, we know that the folks who do share a common lived experience are very valuable in terms of, you know, their expertise and that lived experience. But what about those who do not share the common lived experience? Are they then disqualified from providing these services? I just want to make sure that we're not being unnecessarily too restrictive. I mean, I certainly agree with the value of people who have a shared experience, but I know there are also people that provide counselling that don't necessarily have that common shared experience, and would they be unable to provide those services? If I could get some clarification.
Thank you, Member. The Minister of Health?
Thank you very much for the question. Certainly, if they want to deem themselves to be in a counselling relationship, if they're there to counsel, they would need to become part of the college and become counsellors. The lived experience piece speaks to the 12-step programs like AA and A. Those are all peer support programs that are run by people who have lived experience. So our intent is to specifically carve this out in terms of addictions expertise and say that the legislation and specifically the requirement to become part of a college and a regulated health professional. If you're coming to this through those avenues, through your lived experience, then you're not billing yourself as a counsellor or as providing that counselling therapy relationship. That's why if people want to work in that field that don't have lived experience and want to do it as a profession and a trusting relationship, they should indeed become part of the college, regulate, and make sure that they are providing that assurance to the public and to their clients. But for people who are part of programs like NAA and A and other community-driven peer support, faith-based and non-faith-based, that they're not billing themselves as being a health practitioner, and therefore they shouldn't have to be part of the college if they don't choose to act in that way. So that's the rationale. Thank you.
Thank you, Member. The Honourable Member for Erdrea.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And through you, Madam Chair, to the Minister. Minister, I appreciate the efforts with this amendment in terms of peer support groups, which I think is what this addresses in the amendment. What is not addressed specifically is counselling services provided by a minister or a pastor in a church setting in terms of addiction or mental health treatment and not going under the banner of the college. So the question is, will a pastor or a minister within a church be able to provide counselling services to their members?
Thank you, Member. The Honourable Member for our Minister of Health?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So I want to start by addressing the member from Erdrea spoke about her constituent, I think his name was Mike, in previous iterations of this debate. And it's exactly for people like Mike who are coming to this from that angle as, you know, peer mentor with common lived experience, that this amendment, that we crafted this wording to specifically make sure that we had carved that piece out. And just to reiterate, this is about people who are talking about themselves as counselling therapists and using that title to bring in folks from outside. So in terms of the religious relationship with somebody who's your spiritual advisor and who may be counselling you from that angle, spiritual counselling isn't part of the legislation. And certainly, when you're working with somebody through religious organization, that is the focus of the counselling that they're providing. So the legislation isn't intended to address that relationship between somebody who's working spiritually. It's around people who are billing themselves as being health professionals, counselling therapists, and using that health title essentially, and making sure that it has a parameter around it, just like the title of a paramedic or a pharmacist or a doctor has a title around it. So you might go to things to your spiritual advisor, your priest, your pastor, somebody else in your spiritual community, Imam, to get advice that relates to those types of things in your life, maybe even health advice. But you wouldn't go to them with the same level of relationship as you would to your physician. So that definitely is a unique kind of relationship that this piece doesn't apply to. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. Are there any other members wishing to speak? The Honourable Member for Fort McMurray Wood Buffalo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's an honour to rise and speak to the House on this Bill 30, the Mental Health Services Protection Act. Madam Chair, I want to take this opportunity, and I'm hoping government side will listen.
Just to clarify, we're on the amendment A1. Just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that.
Yes, yes. On this amendment. And I appreciate the fact that we have been trying to work together to get this bill good. And so we have been relaying information back and forth. And with all due respect, I don't believe that this amendment addresses the issues that we're trying to accomplish. This is a good bill. Mental health is a serious issue, as we all know. And I guarantee you, when this session is over, there's going to be 87 people who have less issues with mental health because, to get out of this house here. But, you know, honestly, Madam Chair, I was pretty jaded coming into this session, and then I see this bill. Because up till now, we get no answers and questions in the House. Government side ultimately outnumbers us and everything, gets everything through. And then I saw this bill. And this bill gives me hope that we can work together and address these issues surrounding mental health. And what my references are in regards to this bill are learning lessons from other jurisdictions, learning from Ontario as an example. And Ontario, and as your staff mentioned, Ontario did this back in 2007. So there's some interesting things to note about Ontario's legislation. Is that it started in 2007? It doesn't get finished and proclaimed until December 31, 2019. Why? Because they recognized that it was a very comprehensive bill, that it captured more people than they recognized. So much so, that they felt it necessary, that they had to put in a buffer to allow the college to evolve and develop. Because that's another aspect of this bill, is that any time that we're asking the college of professionals to develop their own institution that will be self-managed, we aren't necessarily sure about what rules they're going to impose. And when you have the 14 groups come together with all their representatives, they're looking at anything that touches mental health, and they're going to be bringing that all into their jurisdiction. And the problem with that is, our society still doesn't understand mental health. We're still evolving. We're still learning, and we will be doing that for a long time because, you know, it is complex. And those are the concerns. But what we can do is we can learn from other jurisdictions. So again, with Ontario, they started theirs in 2007. It won't be finished till the end of next year. But if you were to look on their psychotherapist website, you would see information pertaining to things like a draft policy. So these draft policies, they have a couple on there. These draft policies are going to be, are quite firm in their language, because they've taken 11 years to develop this. They only released this information this year. And I will be tabling this later. But they provided a list of activities that may be deemed to be outside the Controlled Act of Psychotherapy. Registered psychotherapists may do some of these activities as an ancillary activity within the scope of their psychotherapy practices, but providing any of the services below would not constitute the Controlled Act. These activities include, but are not limited to, and there's an entire comprehensive list of descriptions of some of the services available that they have excluded from their bill that they figured out after 10 years, after a decade of studying this, after a decade of working through, after a decade of imposing rules on a lot of these groups, and then finding out that there's a bit of kickback, is that we can learn all the lessons from them, or we can experience them all ourselves. I don't want to go through. I'm someone that learns from our history. And this is so important, because if you look at this list, it describes everything from 12-step programs and problem-solving, to rehabilitation, to spiritual or faith guidance and counselling, to teaching, social skill development, emotional regulation, from counselling and support for advising, advice giving, to instruction, assisting in resolution of dilemmas, the list goes on. And I will table this. It is a very comprehensive list of all the groups that they recognized that they had to exclude. Again, mental health is something that we're still learning about. We're still evolving to that point where we can grasp everything surrounding our mental health. And it is so important that we get this bill right. And this minister has to understand, this government has to understand, that by instituting this bill, that you're planting a seed, a seed that will develop and grow, a seed that is a bill that is responding to the needs of a good portion of our community, as well as a profession, a group of professionals that want regulation, so that we don't get the very same things that you say. But it is so important that we can learn from Ontario on these issues. So again, with that in mind, I would like, we're trying to make the bill better. So in discussions with council, I'd like to add a sub-amendment to this bill, or to this amendment.
Honourable Member, if you can just wait until I have copies at the table before you speak to it, just so I can make sure it's on.
Certain. And so with that, please. Now we're going to have a few minutes to absorb this, so I hope I get this right when we discuss it. And, yeah, no, absolutely.
Your amendment will be referred to as SA1. Please go ahead.
I move that Amendment A1 to Bill 30, Mental Health Services Protection Act, be amended by striking out Part A and substituting the following: that A, Section 29, 3 is amended in the proposed Schedule 3.1 as follows: A in Section 3 by striking out subsection 2, and by adding the following after subsection 3. For greater certainty in this section, counselling relationship does not include providing emotional, social, or practical support between individuals who share a common lived experience. What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to capture the essence of Ontario's policies that they're finalizing right now, that are putting some buffers in to ensure that so many of these groups don't get affected. And if we're concerned about a lot of these groups providing some of the services that they require, I would certainly consider and recommend that we send that aspect of this bill to committee to discuss it further. Because again, when you're discussing spiritual groups and crisis intervention and just overall case management, clinical follow-up and discharge, coaching, coordination services, parental coordination, mediating, problem-solving, psychometric testing or assessment, there's a reason why they thought that these things need to be excluded from the psychotherapy bill in Ontario. They recognize that it is complex. They recognize that people are complex, that mental health is complex, and that we can't necessarily address all issues immediately through this legislation, that we have to give some aspects time to evolve and to grow. As I stated previously, in other times I spoke on this, I mean, at the heart of mental health is the ability to talk to somebody and to be able to vent and express your concerns and have someone listen and understand. And for 99% of the issues, for 99% of the people, that is more than enough. How many of these members of this legislature walk out of here and talk to a loved one or a friend about what they've experienced in this legislature today, or yesterday, or for the last four years? We all do. I hope. Even as a young paramedic student, these are the things that they emphasize with us, is that the one thing you need to understand if you're going to deal with the stresses of the stuff that you're going to see, is that you need to be able to have someone to talk to. Okay? For, since people have been around and we have had civilization, the institutions that have actually been providing that kind of support have been our religious institutions. People who need someone to talk to, they would be able to talk to their pastor, their priest, or their holy person, whatever they may be. And that's what they're there for. That's what we emphasize in our religion, is the ability to help one another. And, I mean, that alone, the spiritual faith guidance counselling alone, is quite specific in the draft policy that is being proposed by the Ontario psychotherapists. I can't preach enough about how important it is that we get this bill right, because it does affect mental health. We need to, we need to just adjust it. And these are just slight variations to this. And again, it's not to say that we ignore the aspects that you identified, that we learned from British Columbia as well, but we need to send that perhaps and study it further. There's nothing to say that we can't take portions of this and study it through a committee and do proper outreach and try to come up with some more firm professional credentials for people that would say that they are mentors or counsellors. So, Madam Chair, I truly hope that the government will consider this. That we will, that we will fix this bill to make it better for what it is. Our intent isn't to, and as I said, we have been working with your health ministry to figure this out, to draft it. I provide them with all this information, I provide them with my amendments, and in turn, you guys provide me with an amendment. But again, that amendment that you're providing doesn't quite address it. So I'm really looking for your support in approving these amendments that I'm trying to provide. They are not spiteful, they're not vengeful, they are not partisan. This is about getting it right for our mental health workers. And again, it is about learning from our peers. It is about learning from Ontario, who have been studying it since 2007. And only in 2018 do they come out with some draft proposals and say, "We need to exclude all these things, because we were overreaching, we were overbearing." Again, when you develop a college, we are making assumptions about what this college is going to accomplish. We are trusting their professional instincts to provide that guidance and that structure for mental health workers. But with that, they aren't going to embrace all of them. They are going to take them all under their jurisdiction. They're going to be telling groups that they cannot provide certain therapies or provide certain counselling. And again, a lot of those groups don't necessarily work with your description of those who live with a common lived experience, as the member from Vermillion Lloydminster has identified. We need to get this bill right, because this is about mental health. If we do not, we risk exposing many people who would ordinarily get supports from certain groups, and they may be discouraged from that. And at the same time, I recognize what the minister is saying about what's happened in British Columbia, is you get a lot of fly-by-nighters. At Fort McMurray with the fire, I saw hints that there's a lot of unregistered therapists and whatnot who were going up trying to, and their intent was good. But again, we ultimately don't know what quality they were providing. And I understand what this bill is trying to provide, we're trying to ensure that quality. But again, we can't knock out so many other groups that provide that type of counselling that the majority of the population can absorb and manage and feel good about afterwards. So I would certainly like to hear from the minister what her thoughts are on this amendment. And again, this is part of some subsequent amendments to address the issues that we're trying to accomplish here, and that is learn from Ontario and figure things out. And, yes, yes. So, and you know what, there's other issues surrounding this bill that I have concern about. Again, it's about consulting. How many times do we have to teach you how to consult? And if I just might point out one group that this bill will affect, and it's called the Addiction Counsellor Certification Association Federation. This is a group that has managed to get a nationwide certification for their counselling sector. And I guess what is affecting this is the fact that this is the group that manages all the counsellors that are on our federal military bases and all of our indigenous communities. So with our indigenous communities, this bill can potentially knock out those people from getting the counselling that is presently being provided to them, and on our military bases. And I've received information from the Canadian Addictions Counselling Certification Federation, and they just have concerns that they have 1,000, over 1,000 members in this province operating as counsellors. They're concerned that this equates to 1/5th of the total counsellors that are certified here in this province. They're concerned that because of this bill, 1,000 of their members are going to be excluded, that every indigenous reserve in our province, that every military base in our province is going to have counsellors knocked off their premise, that they won't be able to function legally due to this bill. So this is a big concern. I guess they do support, so let us be clear, that this group does support regulation. They were the first ones to be able to accomplish that at the national, federal level. But this bill, as they've identified, could potentially knock them out, because they have not been included in this college. They have not been asked to participate. This is a group that represents 1/5th of the official members in this province. So that is concerning. But again, there, and it is interesting to note, of all the associations that are part of this bill, none of them are addiction counsellor associations, unless you can clarify that for me. But I did not see anything in that list that indicates that there are specific addiction counsellor groups in there. So they weren't even included in the discussions. And with that, I thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity to speak to this House about this very serious issue that I believe that we're all working together to come to an arrangement for. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member. Are there any other members wishing to speak? The Honourable Minister of Health?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And I know when some people use the term partisan, they mean it in a derogatory way. And I just want to clarify that I absolutely did this work thinking about the values of the party that I was elected to represent, the values of working people, the values of ordinary families. And it was in that effort that we crafted this legislation, working with folks who were incredibly negatively impacted by people who took advantage of them in a time of extreme need. And I want to clarify that absolutely we talked to working people that work in this field. The Health Sciences Association, which many paramedics are a member of, and also represents many people who work in the addictions world, has been lobbying successive conservative governments to make this change, to protect their profession, their title, and the work that they do for years. And I am glad that as an NDP government, we worked with them to make sure that we And I am glad that, as an NDP government, we worked with them to make sure that we are helping protect the profession and protect patients. I also want to add that I think that the proposed amendment would weaken the legislation. I think that not only are we learning from things that have happened in Ontario over the last decade, it's true, they passed their Psychotherapy Act in 2007, but we also have, Nova Scotia had the Counselling Therapist Act in 2008, New Brunswick has the Licensed Counselling Therapy Act, Quebec has the Marriage and Family Therapists, and they were incorporated into their order of their legislation as well, Mr. Speaker. So definitely, I think that we need to retain addictions counselling in this legislation, and by taking it out would be incredibly dangerous to the profession, to people who work in this field, that we have absolutely worked with to make sure that we get this right, but also dangerous to people who count on, people who call themselves addictions counsellors, to be held to a high standard, to make sure that they are conducting themselves in a way that is regulated, that is professional. And when I think again back to the bill that we just passed, I believe unanimously in this House not that long ago, around protecting patients from regulated health professionals who may violate them through sexual misconduct or sexual assault, that if we pull this section out, if we take out counselling, if we exclude people working in the addictions field, that we don't provide that same level of protection to those patients, I think would be a real harm to the people of Alberta and to the legislation. So not only are we learning from what I'd see as the gaps in these other jurisdictions that pass legislation, again, we are learning from the extreme hardship that is being faced by families in British Columbia right now. And there are calls ongoing in that jurisdiction for people to act before more people are taken advantage of by creating a college and a regulatory body to govern people working in the addiction counselling field. So I am speaking in a strong opposition to this proposed sub-amendment. I believe that it would undermine the intent of the bill and the protection that we've been called on to bring for people working in Alberta. But I appreciate the interesting arguments that were put forward by my honourable critic. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. Are there any other members wishing to speak to the sub-amendment? The Honourable Member for Fort McMurray Wood Buffalo.
I guess, Madam Chair, just to clarify the lessons that they did learn in Ontario, is that, and even the member from Vermillion Lloyd Minister pointed out, is that the government's description regarding those who live a common lived experience doesn't, still excludes a lot of groups in here. And again, like, without taking the time to go into the nuances and understanding the very details of the bill, and I know that the government has received this list, the draft policy, "Activities that do not constitute the controlled act of psychotherapy." There's a reason why they came up with this list after 10 years in Ontario, that only now, this year, did they release this list. And it's because of all the issues that they addressed. Again, this government has the right intention, legislators have the right intention, but it is the college that is ultimately going to create the rules and regulations. And they are the ones that are going to look at anything mental health, and you think about that, anything that reflects mental health, which is virtually everything, any type of medium where you're talking to another person about an issue would be under their purview. And, I mean, if we have to look at this list, if I have to read this out, just so you understand some of the things that they recognize that are only descriptions, because they don't even have titles for so many of these things, there's a reason for that. It's because all the issues that they found were impairing the process. Advocating, simply advocating was out. Applied behavioural analysis is out. Case management is out. Clinical follow-up care and discharge planning is out. Coaching is out. Coordinated services, including parental coordination, is out. Counselling and support with subheadings of advising and advice giving, instruction, assisting in resolution of dilemmas, assisting in improvement of coping strategies, crisis intervention, management, de-escalation, safety planning, referral to other services, information, advice, and knowledge transfer, instructing, intake and referral, even hypnotherapy is knocked out of this. Mediating, malu therapy, just so you guys understand what that is, and I don't say it with a very good French accent, it's the psychotherapy in which you control their social environment, who they interact with, right? So addicts, you want to keep them sometimes away from their regular friends who might bring them down a certain path. Monitoring, problem solving, information and advice giving, 12-step programs, social skill development, psychometric testing or assessment, rehabilitation, single-session counselling, spiritual faith guidance, and teaching. Teaching isn't here. I guess the point is that in 10 years, sorry, 11 years, because this has only been released this year, and they started the process in 2007, that they recognize that there are so many nuances to all these issues, they couldn't put a descriptor for a lot of people that were providing these services. But they also recognize it is a step-by-step process, and this government can also recognize it's a step-by-step process. Intentions are good, but what you're doing is planting a seed that will grow into a beautiful, beautiful bill. But they recognize that they were overreaching in a lot of their stuff. And so, what we're trying to do is confine the descriptions of the people that we're impacting to give it a little bit more flexibility. And again, we can, these things are going to evolve and grow, but the variable that we cannot control is the college that you are creating with this, and the rules that they are going to impose on so many of these groups. By not allowing, by allowing them to, A, by not including them in the discussions, and now you're going to create a group that is going to oversee them, this is going to create great difficulties for a lot of these institutions that I just described. And these are institutions, these are groups that are in every one of our 87 constituencies. And every one of them is going to be affected by this, depending on what the rules are that the college creates. And you can't tell me that you can't... Our obligation is to allow that college to grow, those professionals to develop it based on their understanding. But again, when addictions counselling isn't even included in the group, and you have, and that you have a federal group that is not even, that wasn't even consulted on this, you know, that's tough. And there's nothing to say that we can't study these things, send that portion to committee, and try to figure it out with the college that is being developed. There's nothing to say we can't do that, that this government doesn't have that within their abilities to do that. So I implore that you guys consider this amendment and help me with the definition of addictions counsellors. And that's what this is about, is we're trying to influence the definition of addictions counsellors with this amendment. Okay? Again, because if not, we risk pushing out a lot of groups with that. And I don't know if I can convince you guys any further of this. Again, this isn't a spiteful change, this isn't partisan, this is about ensuring that so many of the groups that help our community aren't knocked out. We learn, we need to learn from another province, we need to learn from the biggest province in our nation, the province that is considered to be the most progressive, the province that only this year did they release a list of things that, jeez, you know what, we were overreaching, we were overbearing. And they recognize that they still have to study these things, as we all do, because we still don't understand mental health. If anyone says that we have perfected the science of mental health, they're daft. Okay? We are so far away from understanding all the nuances of our brains and how we all work and how we are wired. And we need to get this right. This is a reasonable, this is a good bill, their intention is fantastic. Again, these mental health therapists have been asking for this for a long time, but so have all the other health professionals. And, you know, this minister prides herself on the fact that they approved the paramedic, which I was, to become a proper college, and some other health professions. But here's the thing is, we took a long time to evolve to that state. And I agree that we had to take time, because we had to develop our own repertoire of skills and stuff like that, just so we understand how these colleges work. Those are my peers, those are other paramedics saying, "You know what, we have the skills, we have the knowledge, that we can do pericardiocentesis, decompression, that I can stick a needle into someone's chest and I can pull those fluids out, that air out, and save that life that is something only a doctor could do." We had to prove that we could do that in the streets, we had to get a doctor to say that, "You know what, I've worked with you guys, I understand your quality and your skills, you guys know how to do landmarking, you understand anatomy and physiology, I know that you can do this very life-saving treatment that only physicians can do." And we had to demonstrate that over years, that we could do chest decompressions, that we could do a cricothyrodomy, that I could do an RSI, that's rapid sequence intubation, where I could give a patient a lot of medications and drugs to sedate them in order that I could breathe for them. It took time, because before that, we were ambulance drivers. Our job was to get people into a vehicle and get them to the hospital as quick as possible. It was only after the Vietnam War that all these medics from Vietnam, American soldiers came in and joined their fire services, that they recognized that, hey, they can provide medicine in the streets. And you know who they were inspired from? A good Canadian, Bethum, physician who went to China and Asia and helped out providing medical services in the field during some bad wars. But I digress. The point is that colleges need time to evolve and develop, and if we impose these rules on them now, we may be enabling them that even though their intentions are good, that they're actually restricting a lot of the services that we need in our communities, that we don't have quite that definition for. So with that, I ask that, I implore this government to please consider this recommendation, and to limit the college's ability to embrace all aspects of public health, or of mental health, of which there is, it is everywhere, so many groups provide that. And that you consider this, and that we do an evolution on this. Evolve. So with that, I'd ask for any help on that. Thank you.
The Honourable Member, are there any other members wishing to speak? The Honourable Minister.
Just very briefly, I want to ensure that the Honourable Member is aware that actually addiction counsellors are captured by the Ontario legislation, they just fall under the definition of psychotherapy or psychotherapists. So they are actually encapsulated in this, and taking them out of our legislation would not just be a harm to the international comparator, who the Honourable Member says is, his leader, I think, said was the heartbeat or economic engine, I forget what the word was, and this member talks about the most progressive. I'm pretty proud of Alberta and the work that we're doing here with our health professionals to make this work align with the needs of Albertans and with the people working in the field. And again, I recommend that we vote against this. The amendment is indeed pulling out, for anyone who's looking on the hard copy of the bill, it's page 23, the left-hand side of the page, subsection 2, which actually talks about the actions that addictions counsellors take. And I think it's incredibly important that we keep that in the legislation for certainty of the profession and for public confidence. So I, again, strongly recommend that we vote against the proposed sub-amendment. Thank you.
The Honourable Member, are there any other members wishing to speak to the sub-amendment? Seeing none, I will call the question. On the sub-amendment, S.A. 1, as proposed by the Honourable Member for Fort McMurray Wood Buffalo, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Then the sub-amendment is defeated. We are now on the original amendment, S.A. 1. Are there any other members wishing to speak? The Honourable Member for La Combe Pinoca.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to refer to this amendment, and I will say that mental health issues are extremely important. It is an issue that all of us need to be concerned about and aware of, and quite frankly, probably affects everybody's family, all of our families, extended families in some way or another. And so while I applaud the amendment that has been put forward by the government to include peer counselling, I am concerned maybe a bit more about the implication, partly with regards to the newspaper article that the minister used to support the movement going forward. And I guess some of my questions to the minister on this would be, first of all, does the minister have any figures or facts with regards to how many, how much counselling in this province occurs, how many clients are served by government medical addictions treatment versus what I would call non-governmental, in other words, private, whether they're for-profit or nonprofit, the majority of them are probably nonprofit? What's the percentage of how many people are actually being treated by either those currently under the authority and regulations of the government and those who are currently not, which this bill would hope to achieve? And then I guess, following up with that, I guess I would ask the minister, the newspaper article that was cited gives the implication that all of those services that are not under government control and mandate, all those private services are somehow disreputable, somehow dishonest to clients, somehow all of them are providing terrible services. I will agree that there are some individuals out there who are providing inadequate and inappropriate services, and they need to be addressed. But to advance the bill on the implication that all other services that are not government-controlled are somehow terribly defective, terribly abusive, I think is a mistake, and I don't think it will do anyone any good. And I guess I would ask the government then in that regard, has the government any actual real statistics on the government-controlled and mandated individuals and facilities that actually report to us how well they are doing, how successful they are in their treatments? Generally, government reporting gives us procedural reporting, it gives us statistical reporting, it gives us busyness reporting, but I'm asking about real health outcomes, real recovery results. How many people that go through government facilities actually successfully are able to overcome their addiction and stay unaddicted for a year, two years, five years, whatever the number might be? And I guess in that regard, I just felt the urgency to rise and ask these questions with regard to a story, actually more than a story, a letter that we received from an Albertan just recently. And she says, "Our journey started with my son in grade seven. We visited many doctors and psychologists," and to be clear, these are the government-approved and authorized ones, "who either wouldn't share with us what was going on in our discussions." So here's a family with a child, family support is extremely important in any kind of mental health interventions, but they wouldn't share with me what was going on in their discussions. They were prescribing vitamin D, and other prescribing nausea medication that those on chemotherapy take. This ultimately led to a suicide attempt, under the management of government-authorized addictions counsellors. Led to a suicide attempt and being admitted to ACH Mental Health Unit for three weeks, where they focused on sleep therapy and referred to youth addiction. Youth addiction is a voluntary program, and they were unable to provide any meaningful treatment to a youth in active addiction. Things continued to spiral out of control as his addiction condition continued to progress. We landed back in ACH Mental Health Unit for another three weeks' date. This time, when he was released, we were under the care of a government-authorized psychiatrist from ACH who saw my son once a month, basically to renew his prescription for anxiety and sleep medication. Not a lot of help and counselling there. She even told me after about the third follow-up appointment, that she believed that he was fully recovered. In hindsight, nothing could have been farther from the truth. She did refer us to the Youth Addiction Outpatient Program at Foothills, and after many months waiting, that's helpful, for our assessment, Dr. Chang advised that my son had two choices: go into a treatment at youth addiction site out of town, or Woods Home Voluntary Program. My son ran, and it took us many terrifying hours to find him. With the help of the police, he was admitted to Foothills again, and after a night in emergency, he was transferred to Unit 26. While on 26, they put my son through extensive testing, and the doctor again advised that he had only one option, the Alberta Adolescent Recovery Centre. Our lives felt like we were... Our lives felt like we were in an out-of-control merry-go-round in a real horror movie. It was the Alberta Adolescent Recovery Centre that we finally found a treatment center and counselors who understood the situation and how truly sick my son was. After 10 months of treatment and no government funding, we graduated. So here's my question to the minister. How is this legislation going to guarantee effective and adequate real treatment to truly help people so that we don't end up with more stories like this under government-approved, authorized, and mandated medical help and control? We need a broader, wider, fuller solution. I'm not advocating that we should allow people who are scammers and abusers to exist, but I also want to know in the process, how are we actually going to create a system that isn't just about busyness and bureaucracy and creating monopoly for a certain group of professionals so that they can have their profession protected and have a franchise on something that excludes everybody else, when in fact, it's the other people that probably provide the majority of counselling services in this province, and in many cases, do the best amount of work? In this case, the government-authorized person had a terrible experience and had to go to a nonprofit with no government funding, no government authority, in order to get the kind of help they need. So those are just some of the questions that I would like, again, I'm in favor of the bill, I'm in favor of the amendment, but what I really want to see in Alberta is really effective treatment, and just government authority will never, never do it. Thank you.
Thank you, honourable member. The Minister of Health?
Thanks very much. I'll be happy to respond to the questions. The first question that the member asks about the percentage of people that are in facilities that are run by HHS or contracted by HHS versus facilities that aren't, is the exact reason why we need this legislation. Because there is no way that there is any kind of reporting or evidence given to the people of Alberta to be able to make those kinds of decisions, because they operate in their own silos without any oversight or accountability. So my, one of the pieces that this legislation will enable is the ability to answer that question, once all of the residential treatment facilities are registered. And it will be about a year probably for that process to completely unroll, but by this time next year, they should all be registered, and we should be able to have some better accountability to the people of Alberta, particularly people who are making choices that literally are life and death in trying to save the lives of their loved ones and themselves. I just want to tell one more piece that relates directly to the member's question. It was actually a facility in the member's own writing, where the family that stood with me on the day we brought this legislation forward talked about how they took their son to that facility because they entrusted that he would be safe there. And what happened is he went to the garage, or a storage shed, I believe the mum said, that was unlocked, and he consumed what was essentially poison. It was, she thought it was antifreeze or windshield washer fluid of some kind. And things like having some oversight would say, things like poisonous substances need to be controlled, they need to be locked, they need to be secure. If somebody does control a poisonous substance, you have an obligation to call EMS and to bring in health professionals, or to take that person to a health facility to get them help. And instead, what happened, according to the mum and according to the fatality review, is that this young man, Taylor, suffered for many hours. Eventually, he was brought to a hospital, and it was too late, and he died. And there was a fatality review that happened in 2010, that was completed in 2010. It took a number of years because he died in 2007. And they said, they said that regulating and having oversight of these facilities was something that could have saved his life potentially. That's my summary of it. Those weren't exactly the words, but that was the recommendation from the fatality review, is that there be oversight on this. And the government of the day said, yep, we get it. And now it took a new government for us to bring in this protection. So this is really about giving answers to the questions that the honourable member has asked. But the sub, or the original amendment, sorry, because I think we're still dealing with A1, is about making sure that peer support programs can continue on without nervousness that they might be inflicted, that they might be hampered down in some way. And that's why we brought forward this amendment, is to make sure that there's absolute clarity. We've looked at other jurisdictions and what's been done there, and we certainly believe that peer support programs, AA and AA 12-step and others, have a role to play in society in making sure that people are connected and have supports outside of residential treatment facility or other types of substance use treatment facilities in an ongoing way. So again, still hoping that everyone will support the amendment, but happy to have been able to address the questions, and look forward to being able to answer them when this bill passes, and there is some information that is brought in, and being able to be shared more publicly to give that certainty to all Albertans. Thank you.
Combe Panoka?
Yes, and I'm fully aware of that situation, and I'm not surprised it got raised. I will say, though, that part of the situation there, and I agree, the importance of locking up controlled substances, it was supposed to have been locked up, it was accidentally left open. The reality is, too, that the individual actually did not notify anyone that he'd even taken anything. Nobody knew, and he was hanging out in his room. And while I sympathize with the family, I think it's a little bit unfair to blame the facility overly much, because they have actually gone on over the years, they have become fully accredited with a number of different agencies, they've grown and spread, they have instituted all kinds of practices that actually have made them into a very good facility. But still, the government will not, they've tried for 12 years, quite frankly, to be, even though they're accredited, to be cited on the Alberta Government website as a treatment facility that is accredited, they're continually refused. There are many facilities that have made mistakes, and quite honestly, government facilities sometimes make them too. So my real plea is, how do we focus away from just the bureaucratic process and actually create effective, safe healthcare that produces really health outcomes, and not just numbers outcomes and statistics? That's my real concern. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Any other members wishing to speak to Amendment A1? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor of Amendment A1 to Bill 30, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That amendment is carried. Any further questions, comments, or amendments with respect to Bill 30?
On the main bill, yes?
Yes, yes. Fort McMurray Wood Buffalo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, we need to ensure that this bill is good, and has the adjustment period to ensure that all the aspects of this bill are firm, and that we need to ensure that, and again, it is about learning the lessons from other jurisdictions, Madam Chair. And Madam Chair, in Ontario, they put in a transition period of 12 years. Madam Speaker, the Psychotherapy Act was proclaimed in 2007, but they were given a 12-year buffer, which they call a transition period, which ends on December 31 of 2019. And the reason is, they did recognize that by empowering a college, that they didn't necessarily have all the assurances as to who it was going to impact, because mental health is such a broad subject. So with that, and again, we see the result of their review and research and real-life experience over 11 of those 12 years, is that they came out with that list, which I read out to this government side, to this House, that talked about a lot of the groups or description of activities that were excluded and empowered to continue on. And so with that, Madam Chair, and I'd be looking at any friendly amendments to this, but I'd like to table this. I'd like to move an amendment.
Oh, okay. Move an amendment. Thank you. So. As we noted, Amendment A2. Go ahead, honourable member.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, in this amendment, I move that Bill 30, Mental Health Services Protection Act, be amended as follows: that A, Section 28 is struck out, and B, Section 30 struck out, and the following is substituted. That coming into force, 30.1, this act, except Section 29 comes into force on January 1, 2029. And two, Section 29 comes into force on proclamation. So what we're trying to do is recognize that we as bureaucrats, as politicians, may not understand all the nuances, all the idiosyncrasies of the mental health profession. And that though we are empowering this college to be developed and to set out rules right away, and there's nothing to say that they cannot set out many of the rules right away, immediately. But it does give a buffer, a 10-year buffer, for them to work out all the aspects of it. And please recognize that Ontario gave theirs 12 years. We're that much more efficient here, we can do it in 10 in Alberta, right? We can do it in one? Well, you know what? And that's another aspect, is I'd be looking, I'd be open to any, I'd be looking at any friendly amendments to this, but the point is, we need time. A year might not be enough, quite honestly, because it's the unintended consequences, sir. It is the unintended consequences that we get with this. And Ontario, they figured out 12 years they put in, and only year 11 do they come out with amendments. We need to give our health professionals, our mental health professionals, time to figure this out. And again, you know, one group that is very prominent, that has concerns about this, is the one national federal mental health group that we have, the Canadian Addictions Counselors Certificate Federation, Certification Federation. They weren't even included. That's one-fifth of the members in this province that could potentially be knocked out. So with that, Madam Speaker, Chair, I certainly ask that the government side consider this friendly amendment of adding some sort of buffer in order to allow the college to evolve and develop without impairing so many other institutions and groups that we have a hard time putting into a box, putting into descriptor. So with that, Madam Chair, I thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to the House, and I hope that the government truly, the government side truly considers this amendment. Thank you.
Edmonton Manning?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I've been listening for the morning, and I just, I have a couple of comments specifically to this amendment. I can support this amendment based on, actually quite a bit of what I've been hearing this morning. So we talk about the importance of mental health, we talk about the importance of supporting Albertans and addressing the concerns around addictions and mental health, and the urgency that is attached to it. So for me to see an amendment that says, oh, we should wait 10 years until we put legislation in place to actually address the urgency of the issue is a little counterintuitive to me. So just to give you a little bit of background, I've worked in addictions and mental health most of my career. I actually did my very first practicum as a social work student at ADAC before it became Alberta Health Services, a long, long time ago. And so I understand the dialogue that is happening around supporting, ensuring that the people that are supporting Albertans through their addiction and mental health are actually people that are certified. And the reason for that is that this isn't about government versus nonprofits versus private healthcare. This is about the fact that we need to ensure that the people that are working with people with mental health and addictions are trained in the areas that they need, that they're working in. And coming from that background, and coming from working in social work, and I worked at Boyle Street in the inner city, which was primarily a hub for addictions and mental health, there wasn't a single person in that nonprofit, or any partner that I worked with, with youth mental health, youth addictions, that wouldn't be willing to be registered and willing to have their name, like, to be held accountable to their profession. People that work in this area understand the importance of being educated, understand the importance of having that expertise, they understand that they need to be continuously upgrading their training and learning about the new drugs that are being introduced into the community, the different strategies around managing behavioral and social counseling. And there's also recognition in the profession that people have different expertise. I'm a registered social worker, but I don't do clinical social work practice because I don't have the expertise to be a clinical social worker, which means I don't do one-on-one counselling. So even within our professions, there's a recognition of skill-based education and being able to do the work that we're doing. So for me, one, having an amendment that says we should wait 10 years to figure out who should be included in this and who shouldn't, doesn't address the issue that we are talking about today, which is that we have a responsibility to support the area of addictions and mental health. And that also includes supporting Albertans that are needing the support, but it also supports the workers that are in that area, because it gives them a guideline around the expectations of their profession. And there is nothing wrong with that. And when we hear from the honourable member from Fort McMurray Wood Buffalo speak about when he was working in as a paramedic, the importance of them having, being registered and having part of an association, well, this is the same thing. Addiction counselors, mental health workers, want to be part of an association. They want to have those guidelines, those expectations. And so unfortunately, I can't support us waiting 10 years to set those regulations in place.
Fort McMurray Wood Buffalo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to clarify, all those things that the member from Edmonton Manning, damn, I'm good, has expressed, I'm not saying that those things get knocked out or are delayed by 10 years. Again, it gives the college 10 years to figure out unintended consequences. And just so we can clarify what unintended consequences are, it is, again, looking at that draft policy that the College of Registered Psychotherapists of Ontario figured out and put on their website. And again, it is everything from advocating to teaching, with spiritual faith counseling and coordinating services and everything else, and peer-to-peer supports, all in between there. Those were the unintended consequences that they discovered were happening, that were impacted by this college. 11 years it took for the College of Registered Psychotherapists of Ontario to release this list and say that, you know what, these are all excluded from our purview. And again, Ontario's hasn't even finished it till 2019. So the work will still start, the college will still develop. There's nothing to say that they can't put in some of their rules and regulations almost immediately, especially to have some things developed and figured out. But we need to give them a time to understand all the unintended consequences. Again, we're empowering one institution now to develop everything regarding mental health. And again, the consultation didn't include every group, specifically the Canadian Addictions Counseling Group as one example, our one federal group that manages one-fifth of the therapists in our province currently. So again, I just implore this government to consider this 10-year option, or if you choose to have some other wording in there that would still address the issues of ensuring that they have a buffer of 10 years, or some time to figure out the nuances that no one in here is an expert on. Okay? Let us be clear about that. There is no one in here that is an expert on mental health. And we're putting all our weight and resources into one group to experts? I would question that. So with that, I'll certainly say thank you very much, Madam Chair, for this opportunity to speak. And I would certainly ask the government if they consider any kind of a buffer to develop this, or as Ontario put it, a transition period. They put in a 12-year transition period. Surely, we can do a 10-year. Thank you very much.
Any other members wishing to speak to Amendment A2? Edmonton Center?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a very brief comment. The member for Calgary Wood, pardon me, for Fort McMurray Wood Buffalo, has made a few references to the CACCf not having the opportunity to be involved in this conversation. I just wanted to note that Fact Alberta, the Federation of Associations for Counselling Therapists in Alberta, has been listening to the debate and the conversation, and they have made a comment online via Twitter noting that they have, on a few occasions, invited the CACCf to join with Fact Alberta and work together with them, but there hasn't been mutual interest in that. They do also note that two of the members, pardon me, of They do also note that two of the members, pardon me, of the CACCF... Pardon me. They do note that two members of the CACCF do in fact sit on the steering committee for Fact Alberta. So they are indeed involved in the conversation. They are indeed part of the group that's been discussing this, perhaps not quite in the, not quite in the way that the member might have wished or feel that it should have taken place, but I felt it was important to have some clarification on the record that they have not indeed been shut out of the consultation. They have the opportunity to participate through their involvement on the steering committee and indeed through an ongoing offer of collaboration with Fact Alberta. Thank you.
Thumbs up. Any other? Fort McMurray Wood Buffalo?
Just to clarify, Madam Chair, I only spoke with the head of the Canadian Addictions Counselor Certification Federation and expressed their concerns through the head of the institution. So just to clarify where my comments came from, obviously there might be discrepancies even within their own organization, but again, we spoke to the head of the organization, who expressed concerns about this bill, who expressed concerns about the 1,000 people that they represent, who expressed concerns about the 1,000 members that they have are going to be knocked off every Indigenous community, as well as every federal institution, which includes our military bases. So... Sorry, what? Oh, no, this is directly from them. This is...
Through the chair, please.
I don't... I'm going to bite my tongue on that heckle that I got from the Minister of Health. I could say about everything that she's ever done in this House, so I'll leave it at that.
Madam Chair, I would just like to clarify a comment I made a few minutes ago. I think it may have been misspoken or misheard, I don't know which. I did not intend to say that organizations should not be held accountable for what happens on their site. What I do mean to try to suggest is that all organizations across the spectrum, whether they're government or not, should be held accountable, and there needs to be a fair and equitable assessment of that, and it shouldn't be used as a way to sort of attack private or non-governmental institutions, as the member from Edmonton Manning has said this isn't about that. And so I think that needs to be, I think that needs to be kept clear, that there needs to be a fair and equitable accountability across all, and the assumption that it's implied that non-governmental organizations are somehow unaccountable or irresponsible or out there creating all kinds of havoc is not entirely a fair statement. And I'm going to want to assume that the government isn't trying to imply that, but sometimes it almost comes across that way. I'm just asking that there be a fair and equitable approach so that some of the institutions that are actually doing a lot of good out there, and I think in response to the minister's point, and it's a valid point, it is an important issue, I think also, though, that we should also point out that that very same facility has done a massive amount of good work in many people's lives. They have hundreds of people who actually are in support of what they have done, who have been helped, who have been, who have gotten off their addictions, who have learned how to manage their lives and manage the issues. And so I think we need to keep a balance there. Accountability is always extremely important at every level, but let's also give credit where credit is due. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other members wishing to speak to Amendment A2? Seeing none, we'll call the question. Nope. Nope, nobody? Okay. We'll call the question. All those in favor of Amendment A2 as proposed by the honorable member for Fort McMurray Wood Buffalo, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
That amendment is defeated. And we're back on the main bill. Are there any further questions, comments, or amendments? The honorable member for Vermilion Lloydminster.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do appreciate the opportunity to address Bill 30 this morning. And again, I would lay, as I said during the debate on second reading, I'd like to thank the honorable minister for bringing this forward, not wanting to, not wanting to sort of dwell too much on the previous amendment, but I would say that while we are always endeavoring to craft the best legislation we can in this House, I think sometimes we have to also apply the 80/20 rule. And that is that if you get it 80% right, to try to get that last 20% perfect is, you know, sometimes in fact, like Voltaire said, "perfect can be the enemy of the good." Or as another old philosopher said, "It's better to have a diamond with a flaw than a perfect pebble." And so this may well be a flawed diamond, but I think we should proceed with the flawed diamond. But there is still one flaw, that I'd like to get my jeweler's tools out to fix. So I do have an amendment. If the pages, we will pick it up, and I will wait until it's distributed before I read it into the record. But in prefacing my comments, Madam Chair, I do want to say that I think balance is something that I've talked about in this House before. And in speaking, again, as I did in second reading about my conversations with the Thorpe Recovery Centre, we talked a lot about the balance that's required. It is, I think, absolutely necessary that there be some regulation of counseling and addictions treatment services in our province. You know, the fact that there is really nothing there currently, and that many of the organizations and institutions that provide these services are doing it on a voluntary basis, does leave the potential for some, shall we say, abuse, or the potential for some people who are not skilled or not properly trained to enter into this very, very important area. And certainly, we know that the whole issue of addictions has been brought into greater focus in recent years as a result of the crisis within, the opioid crisis. But specifically in my conversations with the Thorpe Recovery Centre, there was concern expressed when I spoke with the executive director about Section 12. And just to reiterate, Section 12 deals with inspections of accredited facilities. Section 12.1 deals with inspections that occur as part of the, shall we say, general assurance of compliance with the Act. So I would call that a routine inspection, if you like. Section 12.2 deals with inspections that occur as a result of a concern over a possible breach of the Act, or as my colleague, the honorable member for Calgary Mountview, mentioned during second reading debate, the potential that there is some unsavory practice going on. And certainly, this is something that we would want to see rooted out as quickly as possible. But I mentioned during debate on second reading that I felt that, especially when we're dealing with an addictions treatment facility, that the residents in that facility deserve some degree of notice, that an inspector was going to be coming for a visit. And the health minister justifiably asked me why, and why an addictions treatment facility should be any different from, say, a long-term care home or a group home, and that in fact, language in this bill was being lifted essentially word for word from the Acts that govern those institutions. And the difference, Madam Chair, is that people who are in a long-term care center with, for example, dementia or some other specific health needs requiring long-term care, there's no stigma attached to that. There's no stigma attached, and in fact, in many long-term care centers, people come and go and visitation on a very regular basis. But if you're in an addictions treatment facility, in a residential treatment facility like the Thorpe Recovery Centre near Lloydminster, you have an addiction, and you're addicted either to alcohol, drugs, gambling, or sex. Those are the four areas that are being treated at the Thorpe. And I can tell you, there's a considerable amount of stigma attached to all of those. And the people who are receiving treatment for any of those addictions, I think they have a justifiable concern about their privacy. And so one of the things that the Thorpe Recovery Centre always does when someone is going to visit the facility, is they make sure that the residents who are currently there are aware of that, so that, you know, if some residents would prefer not to be seen or in public areas, they have that opportunity to stay in the room, and, you know, just so that people are aware. Now, there was some concern expressed that perhaps an institution that was doing some things that were against the regulations or against the law would hide something. And I tried to assure people that a four-hour notification was nowhere near enough time to cover up things that are unsavory, but in speaking with, again, with the executive director at the Thorpe Recovery Centre, I suggested, how about a two-hour notice? For a routine inspection only, not for an inspection covered under 12.2. 12.2, I'm not suggesting we should amend 12.2 in any way. If there is suspicion of some improper activity going on within a residential detoxification or addictions treatment facility, then I fully agree that the inspector should be able to enter that facility without warrant or without notice. But in the case of a routine inspection visit, I think in those situations, I think that it is reasonable, given the sensitivity of addictions treatment and given the need for confidentiality, especially, I'm going to say, in a small community. I mean, again, it may be a little bit difficult for someone living in a larger center to appreciate this, but when you're living in a smaller community and you walk into one of these facilities, the chances are pretty good that you will see somebody that you know. And they may not want to be seen by you. And so because of that, I'm going to introduce the amendment that has now been distributed. And Madam Chair, you have the original. I move that Bill 30, the Mental Health Services Protection Act, be amended in Section 12, A, in subsection 1, by adding "subject to subsection 1.1 after, at any reasonable time", and B, by adding the following after subsection 1, 1.1. An inspector or a person authorized in writing by the inspector shall give at least two hours notice of the time and place of the inspection to the owner of the facility, location, premises, or place that will be subject of an inspection under subsection 1. So Madam Chair, again, I stress that this is an inspection that is being done, again, a routine inspection that is being done to ensure compliance with the Act. And I know that the frequency of those inspections is going to be dealt with under regulation, you know, and there are different arguments as to how frequently that should occur. But I think this is a needed change that recognizes the unique nature of an addictions treatment facility and the unique nature of the need for the residents of those facilities to at least have the option of having noticed and not being in public areas or being seen. People guard their privacy. These are, these institutions do not have a lot of visitor traffic. In fact, they have very little visitor traffic. And, you know, again, I return to what I said in the debate on second reading, the Thorpe Recovery Centre has an outstanding 40-plus-year track record of treating people with addictions. I think we should draw on that experience, I think we should draw on that experience to try to perhaps remove this small flaw in the legislation. I do think this improves it, and I do think it strikes the balance between the need to be able to inspect institutions that are perhaps engaged in activities that are not compliant with the regulations or with the Act, but at the same time, providing a balance such that residents of that institution are given appropriate notice that their privacy is being protected. And I would ask for support of the amendment.
Honorable Minister.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and to the member for the amendment and for bringing this notion forward in second reading and having further dialogue with us on it over the last few days. I think that what he's asking for around the ability for folks to be able to guard their privacy is fair and reasonable around routine inspections. Obviously, if it's a safety concern and it's a focused inspection, and this section doesn't apply to those, the honorable member understands why we won't be able to give prior notice to the facility and to the residents, because we want to ensure their safety. And I think that this is a reasonable and fair amendment. I'll be keen to support it. And I just wanted to clarify with regard to some of the information that was shared previously, there are approximately, and we say approximately because, again, not everyone needs to report to us because there is no official oversight or regulation regarding residential treatment facilities, but we believe there are approximately 16 on reserve that we know of. They don't employ thousands of people. The bill does not impede operations of facilities on First Nations. A person working on those facilities may choose to become a member of the college, particularly if they use the protected titles that the college will be around, with regard to counseling therapists or addiction therapists. And elders and peer support are exempt, and they are federally funded and are required to meet standards that exceed those in our Act that we're proposing. So that's a little bit of fact to connect back to the previous speaker. Thank you.
Any other members wishing to speak to Amendment A3? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor of Amendment A3 to Bill 30, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That amendment is carried. Any further questions, comments, or amendments with respect to this bill? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? Regarding Bill 30, the Mental Health Services Protection Act, on the remaining clauses of the bill, are you agreed?
Agreed.
Opposed? That's carried. On the title and preamble, are you agreed?
Agreed.
Opposed? That's carried. Shall the bill be reported? Are you agreed?
Agreed.
Opposed? That's carried. Deputy Government House Leader.
I move that we now rise and report Bills 32 and 30.
Having heard the motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is carried. The committee will now rise and report.